Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular session meeting of the Leewood Governing Body. I'll ask that the Governing Body come to order and the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Sunkel.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Gayad.
Here.
Councilmember Sipple.
Here.
Councilmember Harrison.
Here.
Councilmember Kane.
Here.
Councilmember Castor.
Here.
Councilmember Villa is not present at the moment, and Mayor Mark Elkins is present and presiding.
Thank you, Ms. Stromberg. I find that a quorum is present this evening, and we may move on to the business of the evening. And with that, I would ask you all to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Now, I have two individuals who've signed in to make comments under the citizens' comments. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself already. Does staff have any revisions or amendments to the agenda as it was published last week?
We do not.
Thank you. With that, is there a motion to approve the agenda as it was published?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Larson, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sipple. All those in favor of approving the agenda as it was published, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the agenda is unanimously approved. Now, we'll move on to citizen comments. I note that there are two residents, and I would also note that we welcome Ms. Villa to the dais, and we are complete now. Thanks. Good to see you, Deborah. You've had a lot of travels lately, so we're glad you could make it this evening. And with that, as I said, we have two citizens who've signed in to make public comments tonight. I would just remind the audience that public comments are welcome from the citizens of our city, as well as from others, and we generally accommodate four minutes for the comments. You should, when you get close to about 30 seconds away from the end of your four minutes, I think a light will blink up there, and you'll also hear an annoying buzzer when you get to the end of the four minutes, and we would ask that you bring your comments to close with that. And having set those ground rules, I would invite Mr. Brandon Myers to the podium. Mr. Myers, if you could join us, state your name and residential address. We're anxious to hear your perspective.
Mayor, I apologize, I signed in accidentally. I think it was for my portion later for the SUP.
All right.
That was the intent.
We'll look forward to hearing you from the, at that time.
Thank you.
You bet. And I have, and I will apologize in advance for the mispronunciation, Mr. David Wedemeyer, who also signed in. Mr. Wedemeyer, welcome. If you could state your name and residential address for us, we'd be grateful to hear your comments.
Mayor, good job on the pronunciation. That's perfect.
Oh, thank you.
My name is David Wedemeyer. I'm at 4804 148th Street in Leewood. I was going over the agenda earlier today, and I'm not sure why this has struck me so much, and I feel that I need to address it. It sometimes makes me feel like our government has forgotten where we came from 250 years ago. I printed off this list of religious observances that was on the website, and we have four major religions here. But I think there's one missing. Did we forget about Good Friday? Did we forget about Ash Wednesday? Did we forget about Holy Thursday? Did we forget about Easter? Maybe some of our Christian employees and folks might want to have special recognitions because they want to go to a service or visit family or something over that. So I think maybe we made an error on that one.
Thank you, Mr. Wedemeyer. We appreciate your comments, and we thank you for sharing them with us. We'll move now to proclamations. I have two this evening. The first one is a recognition of National Co-Responder and Crisis Responder Week, September 14th through the 20th. And I would note that whereas the mental health and substance use challenges can lead to homelessness, incarceration, and emergency room visits, which are more intrusive and costly for communities than earlier interventions and connections to behavioral health services, and whereas the city of Leewood, Kansas, has continued to address the rising demand for mental health and substance use services, and whereas the city of Leewood, Kansas, has recognized the need for additional resources for individuals experiencing mental health crises and identified crisis interview intervention team training, mental health first aid training, and Johnson County Mental Health Co-Responders as emerging effective practices, and whereas the city of Leewood, Kansas Police Department recognizes the importance of advanced and ongoing mental health awareness and training, with over 90% of its first responders now trained, and whereas the city of Leewood, Kansas Police and Johnson County Mental Health Co-Responder Program began a collaborative effort in 2019 to embed a mental health clinician with law enforcement to respond to individuals in crisis in order to provide the right intervention at the right time to avoid arrests, emergency room visits, and repeat 911 calls by connecting to appropriate resources as well as follow-up consultations, and whereas today the city of Leewood has two co-responder positions, which include one additional position approved by the Governing Body in 2022, now therefore I, Mark E. Elkins, Mayor of the city of Leewood, on behalf of the citizens of Leewood, do hereby proclaim September 14th through 20th, 2025, as co-responder and crisis responder week. In testimony whereof, I have heron to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Leewood be affixed this 25th day of September 25, 2025. Chief, I notice a number of your department are here. Do you have comments that you'd like to wish to share with the Governing Body in recognition of co-responder and crisis responder week?
I won't take up too much time, other than to just point out that in our statistics, we're already on pace to eclipse the number of mental health-related calls from this time a year ago, up to 229 from 203. So our co-responders are a very valuable resource, and I'm pleased tonight that we have Jessica Murphy and Jen Melby, two of the supervisors of the program, as well as our own co-responder, Amy Hannes, here to accept the proclamation.
Thank you, chief. If those folks could come forward, we'd like to present the proclamation to you. for a very important not-for-profit group in our community that has served our community very well for the last 65 years. And with that, I note that whereas the mission of the Johnson County Christmas Bureau is to provide warmth and support during the winter holiday season to low-income Johnson County families, increase awareness and understanding of poverty in Johnson County, and give neighbors an outlet to help neighbors, and whereas the Johnson County Christmas Bureau is celebrating 65 years of service, having been established in 1960 by the Shawnee Mission Chapter of the AAUW as a coordinating adoptive family service, and whereas in 1977, the Holiday Shop format was introduced, and since then, the Johnson County Christmas Bureau Holiday Shop has operated for nine days in December, during which qualified clients select from groceries, toys, children's clothing, personal care items, adult gifts, books, and coats, and whereas due to economic factors and changing demographics, demand for services continues to grow, and at the 2024 Holiday Shop, 13,300 Johnson County residents, 2,900 families, and 1,100 nursing home residents were served by over 3,380 local volunteers, and whereas over 3,380 local volunteers, including individuals, community organizations, and businesses, share their time at the Holiday Shop and the Christmas in July festival, and approximately 100 volunteers work year-round to shop, build community awareness, coordinate donation drives, and plan these two annual events, and whereas the Johnson County Christmas Bureau, a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit, is supported by financial and in-kind donations from community organizations, religious institutions, businesses, individuals, and grants, and whereas the Johnson County Christmas Bureau stands as a safety net for fellow service agencies, filling the gaps and providing wraparound resources that sustain families in a season of great need, offering hope, dignity, and a basket of services that strengthen the fabric of our community, now therefore I, Mark E. Elkins, Mayor of the city of Leewood, Kansas, do hereby proclaim September 19, 2025, as Johnson County Christmas Bureau's 65th anniversary recognition and celebration. In testimony whereof, I have heron to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Leewood to be affixed this 15th day of September 2025. I understand that Mr. Matt Masell, hopefully I came close to that, and Roseanne Newcomer are here to receive this proclamation on behalf of the Johnson County Christmas Bureau. If you all would have comments, we'd be very pleased to hear about you, your organization, and what you all do.
Great, thank you for having us, and I just want to appreciate all of you up here because I know it's a busy time for you to take us over and welcome us in here. So I just wanted to say hello and thank you for, Mayor, for taking time to acknowledge us as a 65-year nonprofit. We are excited about the 65-year celebration that's happening on Friday, the 19th. It'll be at the Mint in Lenexa, and we are looking forward to not only celebrating that, but also honoring some of the past history of Johnson County Christmas Bureau from a lot of, we have several people that have been volunteers for over 20 years. So we're looking forward to celebrating them as well. I just wanted to state the facts a little bit about our last Holiday Shop in 2024, just to kind of give you an idea. We know, obviously, we are in a very wealthy county. Johnson County is one of the most influences of income households with very high incomes, but we do have about 64,000 people that are below the poverty level in Johnson County. So when we think about that, we could actually be almost the second-largest city in the state, in this county alone. So keep that in mind when you're thinking about, you know, we're warm next to our fires, and when Christmas comes around and you're looking for presents for your children and grandchildren, we also have those needy families that really need a hand up a little bit. I did want to give you some stats, though, just to kind of give you an idea of last year. In a nine-day Holiday Shop, we were able to give about 38 tons of groceries, 7,500 coats, new coats, to all kids under 18 years of age, and 41,672 personal care items, so things like items that you can't use, food stamps, your cash assistance, those go to bills, maybe. You might need things that are feminine hygiene, toothbrushes, toothpaste, things that really are a very necessity, and especially this day and age. We also have 73,000 books, over 73,000 books were given out, and that's something that you've got to be aware. A lot of people are using electronics these days, they're not necessarily reading books, but these are things that people really want, and we were able, in just nine days, to give over 70,000 books. The kids' toys, though, you know, Christmas is all about toys, but it's not necessarily about stuff. It's more about confidence giving them, and then as well as making them feel wanted, cherished, timed to be special around the family. We gave over 11,127 toys, and we refurbished 100 bikes. So these are items that might have been their only gift for that season, and we want to appreciate those people that collect all year long to literally store those nuts for the winter, so that we can give them out and have them when they're needed. If there's anything that Matt would like to say, no, you're good.
I just want to say thank you, and we appreciate you taking the time to acknowledge us.
I know it's a nonprofit, and sometimes it's forgotten about. So again, thank you for letting us stay and speak here.
Thank you, Ms. Newcomer, and thanks for all that you do for our community. We're really grateful for it.
Thank you, sir.
special business, and that brings us to the consent agenda. Are there any Governing Body members who would like to withdraw one or more items from the consent agenda for additional discussion or questions? Ms. Larson.
G and L.
All right. Dr. Castor.
I had L as well.
Ms. Kane.
F as in Frank.
Thank you. Any others? If not, oh, I would like to join in the withdrawal of L and, and I would add M to that list as well. If there are no additional items that Governing Body members would like to discuss in greater detail, I would ask if there's a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions, exception of items F, G, L, and M. I think I captured them all there.
So moved.
Second.
That, I'll take that from Ms. Villa, I'll take that from Dr. Castor as a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda with the exception of F, G, L, and M, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda with the exception of those items is approved unanimously. With that, I'll call item F, which is a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a license agreement between the city and the Board of County Commissioners of Johnson County in the amount of $440,968 pertaining to the use of certain parts of Fire Station Two for a period of 10 years. Ms. Kane.
Yes, I don't have any questions, it's more a comment. I think this is terrific that we are entering into a new agreement, new for us, anyway, for a period of 10 years to be, for the ambulances to use part of our fire station number two. So prior to this agreement, no fee was collected, and all costs were solely borne by the city of Leewood, and in recent years, the usage fee has become common for all municipalities and fire districts housing county personnel and equipment. So just shout out to the Board of County Commissioners of Johnson County that they now recognize how valuable using our facilities are, and now they're bearing some of the costs. So A-plus, as far as I'm concerned, for this new agreement. With that, I move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sipple. Are there any other discussions or questions for the chief with response to, or with respect to the agreement, the license agreement for the MED Act to use a portion of our fire station number two as a staging area? Ms. Harrison.
I would just, not a question so much, chief, I would just add that it's important that folks understand that the county is going to be spending more than they have in the past, and I was at a meeting recently where the county was, where Mr. Kelly was asked to spend a bunch of county money on some other projects, and he said, no, we have this public safety thing we have to do, and he didn't explain it, but for those of us that work in this area, we understand exactly where this money is going. It's going to six or eight other cities to provide, you know, to pay for this. So when you hear that more of your tax dollars from the county level are being used for public safety, and you're not exactly sure what that means, it might come down to exactly this line item. So thank you. I do think, I second your comments, that it's excellent.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Any other comments or questions for the chief on this agreement? If not, thank you, chief, we appreciate your being here. I believe we have a motion and a second pending to approve my executing a license agreement between the city and the Board of County Commissioners relating to a license for the county to use certain part of the fire station number two in connection with the MED Act services. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the resolution is unanimously adopted. We now come to item G, which is a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city and Mid-America Golf and Landscape, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $730,361.91 pertaining to the driving range project at Iron Horse Golf Course. That would be project 4PRK 49144C. Councilwoman Larson.
I just wanted to give kudos to our Parks and Rec team and the TRUNE team for coming in $100,000 under budget for this project. You know, being good stewards of our taxpayer dollars is one of our most important functions, and I appreciate that effort. And also, Chris Claxton, our Parks and Rec Director, sent out our financials today for Iron Horse through August 31st, and our operating budget is, we have recovered 127% of our operating expenses, and we are ahead of budget, and another kudos to our Parks and Rec team and also to TRUNE. So I just wanted to call them out for that, and we're having good weather in September. I expect those numbers to keep climbing, so unless anyone else has comments, I would motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Any additional comments or questions for the golf course team in connection with either this proposed agreement or with respect to their items that Ms. Larson mentioned? If not, I believe we have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution authorizing me to execute an agreement between to execute an agreement between the city and Mid America Golf and Landscape uh relating to the driving range project. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it and the resolution is unanimously adopted. We come now to item L, which is the Police Department Monthly Report. Uh, I'll I'll go first. The reason that I uh wanted to pull this, I just wanted to be sure and draw uh the governing bodies' attention to a difference in the format and some additional data um that the police department has provided in its monthly report as a result of a request that I made. And that was a request that to add a couple of columns to the crime statistics uh so that we could see uh not only where we were year to date and where we were this month compared to last month, but also to see where we are um relative to a year ago. Because my view is that that gives us a better perspective on what the trends are, uh especially the crime trends and the response trends um by the police department. So that was my my reason for wanting to pull it is to just make sure that you all noticed that we had added some data and the reason that I asked that the data be added. Ms. Larson, I believe you were the first.
Well, and thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the added data. And um it jumped um out to me when seeing this that the our police department's communication efforts in um storing things in their cars out of sight and um hiding valuables, locking their cars. It's been very effective with a reduction in theft from vehicles from one hundred and thirty three to thirty one um in twenty twenty four year to date to twenty twenty five to date. Um, uh excellent work by our department. Um, and then also criminal damage to property vandalism is way down um as as are burglaries. But in um the theme for this evening's proclamations, we see that mental health calls are up. So um I just wanted to call that out and kudos to their police department for, you know, they've really made an effort to educate us about um being safer around our cars and preventing a lot of theft, so um.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Dr. Kester.
I just had some additional things uh that Ms. Larson uh was also alluding to. So we had thirty eight percent reduction in burglaries, seventy seven percent reduction in aggravated assault and battery, fifty percent reduction in stolen autos year over year. So uh chief, kudos to you and your team for making our community uh as safe as we can because that's really striking. Uh, congratulations to you and your team.
All right. Thank you very much. Chief, do you have any comments you'd like to share with us that that give us your perspective on why the the relatively dramatic improvement? Uh, we we've never been a crime ridden community, but uh you've taken a great numbers and reduced them even further. It's just truly been a team effort. We've had uh great success increasing our communications as Councilperson Larson said to our public through a variety of new outlets, both ours as well as the city communications department, kind of adding to that uh the repetition of those messages, as well as a lot of great investigative work throughout our partners in the metro area to find some of the people that were preying on our citizens last year and and get them locked up so they're not out and about this year. Thanks, chief. And again, please convey um our best wishes and our gratitude to your entire team. Uh, it it is noticed by the governing body and we're we on behalf of those that we represent um have a great deal of gratitude for the work that you and your team do. So thank you. Thank you very much. With that, is there a motion to approve? Dr. Kester.
No, I was just gonna say move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of accepting the police department's monthly report for, I guess it would be August, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it and the police department monthly report is unanimously accepted. That takes us to item M, which is one that I asked to be withdrawn. Um, I believe the chief is here tonight. Chief and I have had a little bit of a discussion, but in in looking at the numbers that the fire department reported, um it struck me, and and I have to admit, I'm the first to not understand the technical information that is included in what constitutes different types of calls. But for the uneducated mind, it appeared that um the number of calls that you've responded to as a department over the year to date uh are fairly significantly above what you experienced last year. And I was just curious if you could give us some color and some perspective about your thoughts on why those numbers are what they are.
Sure. Colin Fitzgerald, Fire Chief. So obviously, we're this is eight through eight months of the year. So obviously, there can be some changes as the rest of the year progresses. But we have noticed we are spiking a lot higher than we typically. Each year tends to be higher than the last, almost without fail. But this year, we're on, you know, on um par to break four thousand incidents for the first time ever. But even more significant, our number of personnel responses and unit responses for each engine and incident have grown considerably. And part of that is because if you notice, the fire calls are up quite a bit this year over what they typically are. And I don't exactly have an explanation for that. I mean, some of those are car fires and stuff, but we have actually run quite a few structure fires. Um, when the mayor and I talked, I looked and we were at forty structure fires for the year. But just, you know, today we ran another one, a house fire here in Leewood. It was relatively minor. We did a mutual aid house fire yesterday into Lock Lloyd um across the state line. So for some reason, those calls are pretty popular right now. EMS is trending pretty well, rescues up a little bit over what it is. And typically, rescue for us tends to be either elevator assist, people stuck in elevators, or vehicle accidents with explication. Hazmat calls are down, but that's because over the last couple of years, we really spiked due to all the uh undergrounding that was going on, all the gas leaks. And those have actually leveled out and decreased considerably. So we're back down to what I consider probably a more a norm for hazmat calls for us. But our other calls for service, which covers things like assists, lift assists, investigations, people just need help with stuff that don't fall into one of those neat categories, are also up considerably if you look at the numbers for this month and for the year so far. So um yeah, I mean, we're busy.
Chief, do you attribute that to, I mean, it doesn't seem like our population is growing that much. Um, we've had a lot of construction and whatnot. Is there are there any demographic or or statistical things that you think uh are giving rise to this spike that you're seeing?
So so far, it's obviously just speculation, but I do. I mean, for instance, the one today, there was electrical work being done on a house. We weren't able to, you know, tie it together at this point, but you know, you got to kind of wonder. It does seem like that the work going on in the city and just the density of activity has increased recently, you know, and I think we're just seeing the extent of that. But maybe that's why EMS is relatively consistent, you know, as it has been throughout the years. You know, probably be a little bit higher, but not nearly the spike. We've also, like for the fires this year, I noticed we've run a lot of automatic aid into Overland Park this year, even more than we typically do. But we've also received a lot, you know, especially some of the bigger fires where they really came in and helped us out a ton. So it's just, it's been busy.
Thank you, chief. Other questions for the chief or comments? Uh, Ms. Harrison.
Chief, did you say that you went to Lock Lloyd? Did I hear that right?
Yeah, yesterday. We sent a unit and Overland Park sent a unit. So that's across the state line. So that actually comes in as a mutual aid request, not automatic. Automatic aid is like when we are automatically dispatched to Overland Park under an interlocal agreement. This is actually a mutual aid where they have to call or dispatch and request help. And then we choose whether to go or not. We always do if we can. But we sent them a unit from Station Three, which is actually, we can get to Lock Lloyd quicker than the Belton units can who actually have a contract for that area. And then Overland Park also sent a unit.
Now that that bridge is back open, do you note, is am I, is there anywhere on this grid that you note? Does that fall under other calls for service, these automatic aid to other cities?
It it'll still be like if it's a fire call, it'll it'll fall under fire. Now, so the all fire, that encompasses everything from brush fires, mulch fires, car fires, anything that requires us to do some kind of a suppression related activity. So it's not just, they're not all big house fires, but anything that requires us to do something that's suppression related.
You have automatic aid to other cities every month?
Yes, and we receive it all every month, too, yes.
And we need their help every month, do you?
Oh, a hundred percent. We're actually, so on a typical day, we have four fire crews on duty at a time. A minimum um house fire response in the county is five. A minimum uh commercial occupancy is six. So with single fire, we have to have aid. And like for that one that's listed here at the three alarm, we ended up having twelve units on scene. So less than a third of the people on scene were Leewood.
Wow.
So I mean, when we need automatic aid, we really need it because we're. And at that time, when it first came out, we actually had two incidents that were luckily just wrapping up, or we would have been even shorter. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Pardon me. Any other questions for the chief or comments? If not, is there a motion to accept the fire department's monthly report for the month of August? Move to accept. Thank you, Mr. Siple.
Second.
That was Ms. Phila. Thank you. Um, any other discussion? All those in favor of accepting the fire department's monthly report, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it and the fire department's monthly report is unanimously accepted. Thank you, chief. We appreciate that explanation. We now come to the mayor's report. It has been a busy couple of weeks. Uh, a couple of highlights that I wanted to share with everyone as well as with the public is uh, I wanted to note first, and what I think of as really good news. Um, last week, an internet publication known as worldatlas.com. And I did a little bit of research on worldatlas.com. They're a they're a um an internet company that not only publishes world atlases, but publishes uh articles and information uh around geography uh and other matters um uh throughout uh the year. And last week, they published an article that was entitled Eight Best KC Neighborhoods to Call Home in Twenty Twenty Five. Leewood was identified as one of those neighborhoods. World Atlas described Leewood as having, quote, "easy access to highways, shopping, and restaurants while still keeping a small town feel," close quote, which I think is probably as good a a description of Leewood as I've heard in quite some time and one that I'm I'm very pleased to hear is recognized by others from outside the city. I also want to note that Leewood was the only Kansas neighborhood or municipality that was named in the article. All eight others were on the Missouri side. So again, uh kudos to to the city of Leewood uh for being recognized as a a great place, a great neighborhood to call home. On September the third, Public Works hosted an open house at City Hall where Public Works and the city's consultant reviewed a series of alternative plans to enhance flood control along the golf course and neighborhoods in Leewood South. Uh, the open house supported a good exchange of ideas between Public Works and Leewood South residents. Uh, my thanks to uh Public Works and to David uh for the great work that they've done. Uh, they're now um incorporating and assimilating the comments that they received. And I think that they'll have a proposal for us. There were, I think, two, uh there were three or four different alternatives, as I recall. I know that Ms. Larson was there and I think some of the others were there as well. And I think their plan is to um either come up with one recommendation to us or perhaps a couple with alternative costs, because of course, there are different costs that go with each one of them. But I think that we'll be seeing that certainly before the end of the year. Uh, and again, my thanks, there were a number of of Leewood South residents who attended and shared their thoughts uh about this with us. Uh, the Rooted and Reaching Project, to reimagine the future of Leewood through the city's comprehensive plan, kicked off on September tenth with the first visioning workshop with residents and civic leaders. Uh, this was a great opportunity for uh the residents who have indicated an interest in participating in this project, had an opportunity to work independent of the elected and appointed officials of the city. And then in the in the morning and then in the afternoon, elected officials and um the appointed officials had an opportunity to take their uh try their hand at um the visioning exercise that that um the consultant put before us. Uh, this begins the public engagement phase of that project. It was followed by pop-up events with the public at a Taste of Leewood and a Touch a Truck event. I believe that they'll also be at the police open house uh here in a couple, here in this weekend, I guess, already. And then the following weekend at the fire department's open house. Uh, and there will be another number of other opportunities for the public to engage as well as for elected and appointed officials to engage in the process. But speaking of Touch a Truck, uh kudos to Chris Claxton, David Lay, and their teams for putting on a fantastic Touch a Truck event at City Park on September the eleventh. Uh, we had everything from the typical fire and police trucks to a school bus, the Kansas Raceway pace car, uh the city's Storm Sewer TV truck. I had no idea that we had a TV, that we own a TV truck that can send this little kind of submarine thing uh that goes through all of our um stormwater sewers and to evaluate their condition. It was fascinating. Um, and especially, I I gave my thanks uh by email, but I want to do it publicly here, um to uh the Public Works, the Police Department, the Fire Department, and to um Parks because it took a lot of work. A lot of these people were putting in extra time to to sit and talk and engage with our um with our residents and their children. The children had a great time. We had a vacuum truck there that I'm still not quite sure I understand why, but it has a high high pressure nozzle um for water. And they had a target set up so all the kids could take their hand at trying to use the high pressure nozzle water thing uh to shoot the water cannon at the target. Um, it was just a a great time. And uh the last count I had, and Chris probably has more or has better information than I did, I left at about six thirty, and at that time, over thirteen hundred people um had come uh to the event. Uh, the only problem, you wouldn't, you'd never know that we have problems like this in Leewood, but was parking. And so uh folks that did not bring uh wagons for their kids had some challenges getting to and from the event, but again, a a good time was was had by all. And and my thanks to the city staff. They did just a wonderful job putting this thing on. Um, so again, Touch a Truck is a is a, and again, the kids were, the kids were amazing in that, you know, they they had the opportunity to actually touch the trucks. And there were all these fancy trucks there. But you know the one that had the longest lines, the kids behind it? It was the backhoe. For some reason, backhoes fascinate young kids. And so the longest line that we had, I mean, we, the kids could get into all kinds of of big equipment, but they all wanted to get behind the controls of a backhoe. The good news was it wasn't turned on. So um again, kudos to to all the city departments for participating in a great event. Um, just a reminder, as I mentioned before, the police department is having their open house on Saturday, September twentieth between eleven and two at the Justice Center. The police department will be demonstrating everything from our new K nine uh to our drones uh in action uh at the um Justice Center. Uh, I encourage all the governing body members to at least take a few minutes out of their day. It may still, it may be a little rainy. I don't think it's going to be quite as hot as last weekend was, but the police department puts on a great show. And you know what? Uh, the 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 members of our police department really appreciate it when we when we turn out. And they're very happy to engage with all of us. So uh again, I would encourage our citizens as well as our governing body uh to attend that. And then if you don't have enough to do in in Leewood during this fall, the following week, uh the Leewood Fire Department will host their annual open house on Saturday, September twenty seven from ten AM to two PM uh at Fire Station Number One at Ninety Six and Lee. Uh, so if you didn't get to touch one of our fire trucks last week, another opportunity is on the way for you. And again, uh it's amazing, kids of literally all ages love to climb into a fire truck and see what it looks like to be sitting in the driver's seat of a fire truck.
What are the hours for the open house for police?
Um, it, they are uh eleven AM to two PM. And last, I want to congratulate the Leewood Chamber of Commerce and in particular Stephanie, who will be speaking to us a little bit later, uh on a fabulous Taste of Leewood event last Saturday at Park Place. Park Place blocked off their two main streets and participants were treated to an amazing array of menu items, um as well as both alcoholic and non-alcoholic drinks. Uh, the best part was that it didn't rain and the weather cooled off a bit. Uh, I saw a number of city staff and our governing body members there enjoying themselves. And I just want to make a a brief editorial comment. It struck me as I sat there watching this event transpire and the people walking up and down the streets, um that this was exactly the kind of community event that we envisioned, it must be twenty years ago now, when Steve Albert and Melanie Mann first brought this mixed use concept to us so many years ago. For once, the drawings that were provided at the concept stage turned out to be exactly what we experienced Saturday night. So again, uh thanks to Park Place for hosting. Thanks to the Chamber of Commerce for putting on an extraordinary event. Um, they had a ton of people there, uh but they managed the lines very well. And um again, it just, it it struck me, um uh Park Place was one of the places, one of the very first projects that I worked on on the uh Planning Commission. Um, and you know, in in so many instances, for lots of reasons, none of which are nefarious, the end result that we get from these plans is oftentimes much different than what we saw on the first night they were brought to us. But this was one instance, and there's been a lot of ups and downs for Park Place over the years. But this is one instance where what we saw on Saturday night was exactly the kind of community um event that we had hoped we would see at Park Place. And so with that, uh those close my remarks this evening. Are there questions from governing body members or from uh Ms. Stoddard about my report? If not, uh are there council member reports this evening? Seeing none, uh Ms. Stoddard, it's your turn. Do you wish to be heard?
I have no report this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stoddard. Appreciate that. Uh, we come now to committee recommendations. I think that all three of these tonight are planning commission. So I'm glad to see Ms. Hurley come to the podium. Uh, first, I'll call uh Planning Commission case number eighty four dash twenty five, which is to accept the applicant's request to withdraw a special use permit application and preliminary plan for Leewood Commons, Leewood Daycare, located north of Town Center Drive and east of Knoll Avenue. Ms. Hurley, do you wish to be heard?
Um, I will just uh back up what you said. This was heard by the Planning Commission. I will just back up what you said. This was heard by the Planning Commission on August 26th. The Planning Commission did vote to recommend denial of this item. After that meeting, the applicant did contact our staff and requested that the item be withdrawn. They decided not to move forward with it. So there is no further action that the governing body needs to take at this time.
So we need not accept, formally accept the request to withdraw?
I will let Patty elaborate on what you do or do not need to state for the record.
Ms. Bennett, what kind of counsel do you have for us?
It's phrased as accept. So normally, I would say a motion second and a vote. I think we probably could have done this with an acknowledge on your consent agenda, but Stephen and I were dealing far away from each other when it was coming together, so...
Okay. With that, just to make sure we're crossing the t's and dotting the i's, is there a motion to accept the request to withdraw the special use permit application?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Phyllis. Second. Thank you, Mr. Sunkel. I'll take you this time. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of accepting the applicant's request to withdraw a special use permit, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and that, by the way, was for Planning Case Number 84-25. The ayes have it, and the applicant's request to withdraw a special use permit is accepted. We come now and call case, Planning Commission Case 82-25, which is an ordinance approving a special use permit for Leewood Shops, Leewood Wine and Spirits, located south of Somerset Drive and west of Lee Boulevard. Ms. Hurley, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council members. As you said, this is a request for a special use permit for the Leewood Shops, Leewood Wine and Spirits, to allow packaged liquor sales. There was a special use permit originally approved for this location back in 2022. There is no proposed change to the use, or a proposed change to the name. This is simply coming about because there is a change in ownership. And the way the previous ordinance had been issued, it ran with the, that specific owner of the shop. And so since the shop is being sold, again, even though there is no change in the use or the name, nothing will change with what you see and experience. We do have to bring it back for a new special use permit. So after the Planning Commission considered this on August 26, the applicant did contact our staff and asked that the governing body waive the provision in the development ordinance that prevents the special use permit from being transferred to new ownership. The LDO does allow the governing body to allow that transfer of the special use permit to a new ownership with the addition of a stipulation. So we have added language in your staff report that you can see if you should choose to do that. So if you were to choose to add that stipulation, that would allow the transfer of the special use permit to potential new ownership of the same liquor store with the same operation, that additional stipulation would require a two-thirds majority vote by the governing body. So just to show you on the map, I'm sure everyone is familiar with this location. They're at the corner of Somerset Drive and Lee. And it's a pretty popular spot, a nice little shopping center that we have in the north part of town. And then just a few shots of the inside, if you haven't been inside of the store. So if you have any questions, I can answer those for you.
Ms. Hurley, I think you may have said this, and I was checking something else on my sheet here, but what staff's recommendation with respect to the proposed stipulation?
Staff would recommend that you could approve the stipulation.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Ms. Harrison?
Just a comment, more than a question. I had concerns when I read this, thinking that this was not a business that wasn't being successful, and that that was why somebody was selling so quickly. So I did a little homework, called some people. I guess it's a very successful store, and that the only reason that the owner is, is selling it is an opportunity came along, work-wise, that was too good to pass up. So I'm thrilled to know that, because we just lost our little neighborhood liquor store in my neck of the woods. So I, I had concerns. Little Lancaster Liquors at 133rd and Mission just closed last month. Then both my sons worked there in the past. So I have an affinity for these little neighborhood liquor stores. So I'm thrilled to know that they are doing so well, that the neighbors love it, that they shop there, even though there are bigger stores a few miles away. So kudos to them. I'm thrilled.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Ms. Kane?
Yes, it's my opinion, in the past, in my tenure anyway, that having these special use permits come up before us when something happens is not a bad thing. It gives us an opportunity to review and make sure everything is copacetic. So this is a 20-year special use permit. So the idea that just because they change owners, and we might not see it for 20 years, I, I don't disagree the fact that something were to stimulate, you know, this is something that stimulates them coming before. One of my questions is, was there a discontinuous or change in, well, there wasn't a change in use, but was there any discontinuances that this having to reapply caused the new owner? As far as, I mean, as far as having to come before us, it didn't stop any sales, it didn't stop them being able to do anything, right? It just, you know, gave them the obligation, I guess, to come here.
Yeah, I don't believe that it caused any hangup in the sale. It potentially could, depending on timing and how a sales contract would be constructed. But that's, you know, certainly for your discussion regarding that additional stipulation.
Right. So personally, I don't mind. I don't mind that they have to come before us. I think it teaches them part of the process. It lets them know. It gives us an opportunity to, you know, look at things. Sometimes things come up. And so I would not be in support of the special use permit being transferable, especially because it's a 20-year SUP running with the business. So that's my one, that's, that's my opinion, anyway.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Other questions or comments? Dr. Kestner?
So are these type of specialty, special use permits, are they address-specific? So let's say this company wanted to move to a larger location in another part of town, does this just give them carte blanche to do that, or does they have to go through the whole process again if they change addresses?
If they were to change addresses, they would need to go through the process again, especially this permit typically runs with the land and the ownership.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kestner. Any other questions for staff? Yes, Mr. Sunkel?
The state requires licensing for liquor licenses, correct? So the new owner would have to pass that. So there would be some oversight, even if we do not look at it on the next transfer. I'm talking about just the waiving of the requirement that it be reissued. So, yeah, I think, I think as long as the, the state is looking at the, the new owner, I'm not sure we really have to, but I do understand Ms. Kane's...
Thank you, Mr. Sunkel. Ms. Phyllis?
I was hearing the echoes of Andrew Osman about being more business-friendly, and it seems that if there's really nothing other than the paperwork we're going through, I can see where it could be an issue, given the timing of the Planning Commission and our commission, and we're really not substantially looking at anything that requires, my opinion, our say, because as Alan mentioned, the state's taking care of it. We've already approved the special use permit, and if nothing's changed, it just saves everyone some homework that isn't serving any, anything that seems to be necessary.
Thank you, Ms. Phyllis. Ms. Kane?
Yeah, this state, this SUP doesn't have anything to do with a liquor license. This is, this is a procedural thing that they're asking to be waived. That has nothing to do with a liquor license. So, and then if this is approved tonight, this has nothing to do with anybody else's SUP that they're being required to do. So again, if this isn't, if we're doing an isolated change in our own policy for this one location, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not following this, you know, why would we change what we're doing for one single location? It makes, that makes no sense to this brain. If we're going to change a policy, let's change the policy, not do an isolated change that, how are you going to, you know what I mean? If we change a policy, we change a policy. This is a one-off that has nothing to do with the liquor license, although I understand what you're saying. But anyway, that's, 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 this seems like a one-off. I don't recall waiving this before, not, not this location, but anywhere in the city of Leewood. So I don't understand why we would all of a sudden start doing that.
Thank you, Ms. Kane.
Sure. So just to elaborate on that a little bit, the LDO does provide the specific language that any applicant can request that. I can't speak to whether or not, you know, we've ever done that before, but that provision is specifically in the LDO that any applicant for a special use permit could request.
Yeah, it's great.
So...
Thank you. Other questions for staff? If not, I would invite the applicant to come forward if you have anything you'd like to add to the record as we consider this. If you could, since you signed in before, I'll let you step up again and state your name and business address, and we're interested in your comments.
Brandon Myers, 3604 West 85th Street. My wife and I are here representing AB Worldwide. We are the proposed buyers of Leewood Wine and Spirits. We live in the neighborhood, longtime Leewood residents. As you mentioned, that it's a wonderful store. Fits in the neighborhood great. We're big fans, we're customers. We, we saw the opportunity to purchase. And one of the reasons we requested the transferable SUP was because it added actually quite a few months to the process, and additional investment in the process. So we are just looking to make it potentially easier down the road for if and when we decide to sell for the new buyer.
Thank you, Mr. Myers.
You're welcome.
Any other, any questions for Mr. Myers as the applicant? If not, you may step back. Thank you. We appreciate your comments. We move now to the discussion period, although we've had a fair amount of discussion already. We'll go ahead and take up the discussion in the, in the normal course and order of events. Before we do that, though, a question for Ms. Stromberg. Because this is an ordinance, is a roll-call vote required or not?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And if we were to consider the stipulation separate from the ordinance, would that also require a roll-call vote?
No, I don't believe so. I think that's part of the motion.
Thank you. So foreshadowing a little bit, what I was about to tell you all is that my inclination is to take this up in two parts. One, the addition of the stipulation, and then two, once we made a decision on that, the ordinance approving the special use permit in whole, either with or without that stipulation. But I would be interested, is there any other comment or discussion amongst or between the governing body with respect to either the, generally, the ordinance to approve a special use permit, or the special stipulation that we're considering that would waive the requirement that a new special use permit be obtained for the location, if and when it moves to separate ownership? Ms. Kane?
Yeah, I just want to say, I have nothing, nothing ill will toward your, I, I live at 8103 High Drive when, remember driving when that location was the ACHD. So I have a long history back in the 80s of this particular location. So it has nothing to do with your business or that. It's just, it's just procedurally, it's not something we've typically done in the past. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Other discussion or comments? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the addition of the stipulation described by Ms. Hurley to the ordinance for consideration?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sunkel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Gayed. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of adding the stipulation relating to a waiver of the requirement for an additional special use permit in the event of a change of ownership, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
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 Okay, let me make sure I got this right. I have Mr. or Dr. Kestner, sorry, Steve, Ms. Larson, Ms. Harrison, and Ms. Kane opposing. And I have Mr. Sunkel, Ms. Gayed, Mr. Sipple, and Ms....
Phyllis.
Phyllis, sorry, my mind's working on two different tracks all at the same time here, because I'm doing the math here and realize I'm going to have to cast a vote here. So there is a four to four tie.
Mayor, actually, you need to have a supermajority to add this back.
Oh, thank you. That was on the, that was actually in the material someplace.
Two-thirds, right.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. So we actually, and a supermajority in this case would be how many, Ms. Bennett? Six?
Yes.
Six? Okay, great. So even with my vote, this would fail to achieve that supermajority. So the stipulation is declined and will not be appended to the special use permit ordinance. Given that, do I hear a motion to approve the ordinance approving a special use permit for Leewood Shops, Leewood Wine and Spirits?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Thank you, Dr. Kestner. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the ordinance, or adopting the ordinance approving a special use permit for Leewood Shops, Leewood Wine and Spirits, please indicate by, oh, we have to do it by roll-call. Sorry about that. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Sunkel?
Aye.
Councilmember Gayed?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Councilmember Phyllis?
Aye.
Councilmember Sipple?
Aye.
Councilmember Larson?
Aye.
And Councilmember Kestner?
Aye.
Thank you. I have eight votes in favor and none against, and the ordinance is adopted unanimously. I now call case number, or Planning Commission Case Number 55-25, a resolution approving a final plat and final plan for East Village, the Elizabeth Active Adult Community located north of 135th Street and west of State Line Road. Ms. Hurley, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. As you said, this is a request for a final development plan and final plat for the Elizabeth Active Adult Community at East Village. The Planning Commission did consider this on August 26 and voted seven to one to recommend approval. This is for a 160-unit, 55-plus age-restricted apartment building with retail uses on the ground floor of the building on a four-acre parcel within the East Village development. The building is a little bit over 300,000 square feet total. Of that, approximately 220,000 square feet is residential space, approximately 10,000 square feet is retail, and there is about 80,000 of structured parking within the building, totally contained, that will not be visible from the exterior of the building. The building is three to four stories, three stories on the eastern end of the building, four stories on the western end of the building. The roof line does not get any taller. The change in number of stories is just due to some change in topography. There are a total of 265 parking stalls provided. Of those, 227 are the interior structured parking that I mentioned, and then there are an additional 38 surface parking stalls provided as well. So the site plan on the screen is just an overall view of the East Village Development, and the highlighted, kind of darker gray portion there in the middle, shows where this particular project fits within it. Here is a closer view of the layout of that building. To the southwest corner, that is the amenity space that's provided. It includes a pool and some other outdoor recreation areas for the residents. The lighter gray rectangle within the building, that is where the structured parking is contained. That is access on the south side of the building off of that road that comes in off that roundabout. And then there's another kind of smaller, lighter gray rectangle just to the left of that. That is an open courtyard area inside as well that has some balcony space for those interior units, so getting some good daylight for those more interior residential spaces. And then just to show you, the top plan is the approved preliminary development plan. The bottom is this proposed final development plan. They are roughly the same size, pretty much the same overall layout. They did, as they got into the final development of this, sort of flipped the layout just due to the topography of the site. As I mentioned, it does slope down to the west, and so it was a little bit more conducive to put that open amenity space down in the southwest corner of the building instead of the north like they had showed it on the approved preliminary development plan. But overall, you can see that it is roughly the same. The approved preliminary did include that interior structured parking as well that we have shown here on the final. And then just a 3D isometric view of the building within the East Village Development. This is looking towards the northeast. Over there at the right side of the screen is the corner of 135th and State Line. So you can see the way the building lays there just to the north of 135th Street. And then just another view of the building from the interior of the property. This is looking back towards the southwest from that interior northeast corner of the building where they've got some retail space on that ground floor. building where they've got some retail space on that ground floor that is open to the public. And then just wanted to touch real quick, this is noted in your staff report. During the Planning Commission, there was some discussion about the 10-foot required landscape buffer that we have around buildings, and there was a stipulation added at the Planning Commission regarding that. So just wanted to elaborate on that just a little bit in case there's any questions. So the LDO does require a 10-foot deep landscape buffering adjacent to buildings. However, the way the LDO language is worded, it does anticipate that those buffer strips are for the purpose of separating and screening incompatible uses. So as we got back into this after the Planning Commission meeting, taking a bit, a little bit deeper look at how that language is written and some other projects that have been approved, we, we sort of came to understand that the uses within an MXD, a mixed-use district, are inherently compatible. They've been reviewed and approved as being compatible uses, so that screening for incompatible uses is not really applicable here. And we also took a look back at the other mixed-use developments that we have approved within the city over the last 20-plus years since the LDO has been in place. And that 10-foot buffer has not been required around buildings within the other mixed-use districts that we have. So all the way back to Park Place, you can think about the buildings within there. You know, really, when we think about the intent of a mixed-use district, it is to be a little bit more dense and have those, you know, really pedestrian-friendly areas with sidewalks up against the buildings next to the interior streets, and so that's what we see at Park Place. All the way through the others we approve, we've approved up to most recently Lee Wood Village at 83rd and State Line. And if you've had a chance to be up there and see that new building that's been constructed within the last year, we also did not require the 10-foot deep landscaping around that main building. So just, we took a look back at all of them, and that's been consistent throughout all of the mixed-use developments that we have. So while this reasoning was never explicitly stated in any of the projects that we found, talking with other staff and looking back through all those, we're pretty sure that that was really the intent of it, and looking at the way that the LDO language is worded, that makes sense within what we've seen approved with other mixed-use districts. So that stipulation was added at the Planning Commission, but again, then as we found, the landscaping as proposed does comply with the LDO requirements. So there is no change or modification needed to the landscaping as it is proposed. So if you have any questions for me, I can answer those, and the applicant is here as well.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Dr. Kestner?
So I was curious, the LDO, so this is, you know, designed for 55-plus age. Let's say at some point down the line, they wanted to just make it a regular apartment for any age, or any of the stipulations that are being forwarded right now, is that only for this particular age group project, or does it really matter? If they had a, if they took off the 55-age restriction?
You know, I don't have all the stipulations memorized. I don't believe it would really matter. I don't think there is anything in here that would limit it to an age restriction.
And if, if at some point in the future they decided not to do it, is that something that has to come before us, or do they have to apply for a special use?
Change the residential requirements?
Yeah.
Uh, no.
So, thank you.
Is that a yes or no?
No. So if they wanted to make it more restrictive, that would, you know, need review, but to make it less restrictive, but they would not.
Thank you, Dr. Kestner. Ms. Larson, did you have a question?
Oh, just some really small detail questions. Our packet, is it 160 units or 174 units? Because our packet, at least the digital packet says 174 units under the summary.
It is 160, and so if there got, if a typo got in there, I apologize for that.
Okay.
There was a change in overall number of units between.
For the bedrooms? Yes.
So, yes, it is 160.
Okay. That, that just, I just wondered. I would like, let's see, the other questions, I saw the memo from the police department with suggestions for crime prevention. I think that's an excellent idea. I've not seen it in a lot of plans. I hope to see it in more plans. I think that that is, is excellent. The, when reading the Planning Commission transcript, there was a question about, you know, what, what is the rent going to be for the units? That might be a better question for the developer, and maybe they have a better idea tonight as opposed to that meeting because there wasn't a number given. And I, other than adding the vertical mixed use to the building, I thought that was a nice addition to these plans, and my other questions are for the developer, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Ms. Harrison?
Thank you. So instead of the 10-foot landscape buffer, what are we down to?
So, let me get over to it.
I thought maybe it was eight, but I can't.
Yeah, it's a little bit hard to read on here, I apologize. Those numbers are so small, but it's down to eight and it goes a little bit lower than that. So there is still landscaping provided around the entire base of the building, so we're not talking about just sidewalks straight up against the building. We're still getting some nice landscaping, some nice greenery, some nice color in there. It's just not that 10-foot deep buff, buffer. Again, that's envisioned really to screen the different types of uses.
Well, I know you say that it's to screen different kinds of uses, but it also might just be to get more green where we've, you know, taken a lot of green space and turned it into a giant concrete zone. Every time I drive by College and State Line, I wish that building were 15 feet further from State Line and had some more green space. I feel like it's sitting in the third lane of traffic, the way that we, and so I, I have regrets about that, and I don't want those regrets to continue. I also noticed in the packet that this building is 2% larger than in the earlier plans, but that's not big enough of a change, it's a minor change. And I question, why is it 2% bigger? Because all you'd need to do is shave off one row of something and you'd, you'd be within the, the amount. I worry because this, this project en masse had more neighborhood anger about it than any project you've seen in 10 years here. That if every project that comes, every building is 2%, 3%, 4% bigger than it was going to be, then suddenly this is not the project that we thought we were getting. And I don't, this is only the second building in this phase. The first building is not what we thought we were getting either. So we're getting a little tiny bank that's not a big tax, that's a zero tax, you know, you know, giver to the city of Lee Wood. So we're on the second building in this phase, and it's not quite what we thought we were going to get in terms, it's bigger when it doesn't, it doesn't need to be bigger. So I guess I would just warn or ask that moving forward, all these little white blocks that I'm looking at, you know, can they not all be a little bigger than you said they were going to be? Can we keep our eye on that? And can we keep the, the green buffers, you know, where the city would like for them to be because we need more trees around these buildings?
Sure. So just to elaborate a little bit on the size, that 5% increase is overall. So it's not 5% per building, that's development-wide. So, yes, we are tracking that. So as all of these projects come in, those little percentage increase changes or decreases, those stack up for the development-wide. And so once we've gotten two, three, four, five, six projects in here, and they've all changed just a little bit, once those changes have hit 5%, that's going to kick it back to a revised preliminary development plan that would be a public hearing, and so that would open that process back up.
Very good.
And if you will remember, with the Chase Bank, that was a smaller, and so we have to kind of figure all of those into, to work out. So yes, we are tracking that very closely, we're very conscious of the, of the need to stay on top of that, and so we are tracking that. And then with the green space, I brought this image back up, if they could flip back to this on the screen. So just to the west of this building, this is where it borders up to that tree preservation area and a fairly large green space that the developer has preserved and is providing some walking trails and other pedestrian amenities through that. So again, that, that is bordered up right to this building, so it's not just kind of that sea of, of parking and concrete that you might see in some other developments. So that is provided here.
It, it does feel, as I've walked this space, that not quite as many of those trees were preserved as, as we kind of thought. There's a huge, huge swath of, of very few trees between the church and the walking trail. I don't, I don't honestly feel like it ends up being that big, but I, I could be wrong. Maybe, maybe from 133rd it looks like there's fewer, but, and from State, but then from 135th, but.
Yeah, and they do have an approved tree preservation plan that has been through the process as well, and so we are, again, very cognizant of that and keeping a pretty close eye on that. So they are not removing any more than they were approved to remove.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Ms. Kane?
Julie, remind me, was this, were these folks out of New Jersey, the, were they the original intended buyers of this and developers of this building?
I honestly couldn't speak to that. Mr. Holland, who's representing the applicant, may be able to speak to that, but I am not sure.
Okay, we'll ask them, or ask him, Mr. Holland, then. And then as I read this, I think some, the way my brain is reading this is the amenities and some of the improvements, what I view as improvements, for the residents themselves is, has really been enhanced from what I'm reading. Pools and hot tubs and sports courts and community gathering spaces and covered rooftop patios and a concierge level on the fourth floor. And then the owners intend to buy the building, which, you know me and my buying this stuff, and they intend to buy it and maintain it. So, and then do I understand, maybe this is a Mr. Holland question too, is that the addition of the retail on the, on the main floor was also a change? That this was going to be solely residential? Or am I remembering incorrectly? I might be mixing up my 55-plus buildings out on that quadrant. But do I understand that that's a change as well, that there'll be a beauty parlor or a, or a whatever, dry cleaner downstairs? Which again, I think will better serve not only this building, but will better serve the whole community. That's a change as well?
I believe that's correct. With the, when the preliminary development plan came through, I believe this was envisioned as a strictly residential building.
Right.
And so there are some services and amenities provided, interior just for the residents, and then a number of exterior-facing retail spaces as well for not only the residents who live in the building, but for any other visitors to the site.
Right. Thank you for that. So what I see here is, yes, it's a hair bigger, but what I see is the amenities and the changes are considerably better and will serve as an anchor for the development of that. And then I really even appreciate the fact that it's three stories in one area and four stories at the other, and it's not some ungodly nine, nine stories or something. So I, I really appreciate the way this direction is going, and I've got my fingers crossed for the rest of that commercial development along State Line Road that will, you know, Chase Bank was, that was fine, and now this is fine, so I've got my fingers crossed that that whole phase six, six, five, six?
Yeah, five and six.
Will keep, keep improving. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Mr. Sipple?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I tried to recall the original Phase Five East Village, and I would have bet you money that this thing was positioned along the tree preservation area, north-south, rather than east-west. And I, I'm easily confused, so is, is this always been the location of the apartment building?
In the version of the preliminary development plan that was approved, yes. There very well may have been a version prior to that where it was oriented differently. I'm not sure, I wasn't here for all of those discussions, but on the screen that you can see now, that top site plan is the way it was approved on the preliminary development plan that ultimately got approval from this body. So yes, roughly that, that east-west positioning up against the tree preservation easement, but horizontal along that entry street that comes in off of the roundabout.
The next question, Julie, is a lot of the covered parking garages we have in Lee Wood have two entrances. Does this just have one on the south side of the building? If I?
It is just on the south side. I believe there are two entrances to it, but the entrance is just on the south side of the building.
Okay, so that South Drive there?
Yeah.
Okay, because I know Park Place, we spoke about Park Place, and we talked about a number of other locations where they, you know, Prairie Fire has two entrances and so forth. Is that a safety issue, or is there a second entrance so people can get in and get out in a hurry if they need to?
I don't believe it came up as a safety issue in any of our review with Public Works or Fire or otherwise. And this parking garage is strictly for the residents. This is not a public parking like you might have over in Park Place or some of the others where it's just open for the whole development. But the, that being a safety issue did not come up in our review, so.
Is there going to be assigned parking if you're in apartments?
I'm not sure about that, but I will let Mr. Holland address that question.
And then the last thing, for the neighbors in Ward Three, is this where the blasting has been taken place in the last month or so, or is that in a different part of the development?
I am actually not sure. It has been on the East Village property.
Right.
Mr. Lay, if he's listening, might be able to speak. Those blasting permits are issued by the Public Works Department. I couldn't speak to whether or not it's for this particular parcel or not.
I'd be surprised if it was specifically for this. It was probably stormwater. It was probably drainage for stormwater on the streets that are going to go throughout the neighborhood.
Yeah, I would guess it wasn't for this since this has not been approved yet.
Last question, Julie. Where do you anticipate, or where does the owner anticipate most of the people to enter East Village? Off 135th Street or off of State Line by the McDonald's?
I will let Mr. Holland address that, too. I would guess off of 135th since that's a more direct route, but there are entrances off of 133rd into this portion of the development as well as off of State Line. But I will let Mr. Holland speak to where they think most residents might be coming from.
Okay. I see that Mr. Lay has entered the room. Mr. Lay, there was a question posed by Councilmember Sipple. You might be able to answer it.
Was, was the location of this building where the blasting has been taken place in the last 60 days, or is that a different part of the development?
It's in this area. The blasting's a little bit to the east, but also part of this building. So the blasting so far has been for the storm sewer, sanitary sewers that do feed this building.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lay. Other questions from Ms. Hurley? If not, Mr. Holland, I understand that you're here representing the applicant this evening. You wish to be heard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate you hearing us. My name is Curtis Holland. I'm attorney for, as you remember, the Oda Development, the original developer, or the developer of the East Village, as well as the, I represent the current, the proposed owners and developers of this project that's before you tonight, Enhanced Living, Mil Hadad and Tim Cassidy. And they, they couldn't be present tonight, but anyway. I would also like to introduce Jake Haddock, who's our civil engineer with Schlegel, he's here, and then our architect Kirk Volkman with HED Architectures, I think, online somewhere. So if there's some questions I can't answer, maybe they can help out. Anyway, I appreciate you all hearing our case and heard a lot of the questions, and I want to thank staff. You know, they worked very, very hard with our team, lots of iterations that we worked on to, to get it before you tonight. And we do appreciate the Planning Commission recommendation for approval. And heard some of the questions, and I know Ms. Hurle answered many of them, and so I won't try to repeat her answers, but I will try to answer a couple of the questions that were asked that were deferred to the, to us as the team. With respect to the square footage, and Ms. Harrison, I got the comment, I think a lot of the measurement and the size of the building had to do with trying to meet the LDO requirements for the square footages of the units themselves. You have an 80% requirement for 900 square foot, at least 80% of the units be 900 square feet or more, and, and then at least 20% be at least 750. 80% of the units be 900 square feet or more, and then, at least 20% be at least 750 or more. So there are these minimum square footage requirements in the city of Leewood. And there's also probably some difference in the way the square footages get measured. But it gets a little bit too complicated. I won't get into that very much. So that was sort of the square footage requirement. We understand going forward, there's going to be some maximums, square footages that we were bound to. And so, we'll have to look at the other projects as we go forward and watch this, and I know staff will, too. And I know all eyes are going to be on our project as we move forward. So we're going to do everything we can to comply with the approvals that we received a couple of years ago. And so, we appreciate your comment there. With respect to the rents, I can't tell you the exact rents. There are some different size, different unit bedrooms, but I will tell you, it's probably plus two thousand a month. It's on the very, very high end. It's a, this is a really unique facility and first one in Kansas City, in terms of the amenities, the concierge services, the active adult community, the mixed-use component of it, the restaurant in the bottom, which was new, it's an add. So it does make an improvement to the site. We appreciate your comment, Ms. Kane. And then, with respect to ownership, yeah, so the two owners, Mr. Cassidy is originally from New Jersey, is from New Jersey. So yes, you had that right. And then, Mr. Hadad lives currently in Phoenix. He's originally from California, but in Phoenix now is his headquarters. They work together and have developed many sites across the country. So they're excited to be here in Leewood. Really, one of the reasons they liked this site so much was the mixed-use nature of it. It really drew their attention to it. And so, I really think they're excited, really excited to be here tonight. The orientation of the building, Mr. Sipple, I think's always been that east-west orientation. I may be wrong, but that was my memory of it, and I know the approved PDP shows it that way. And then, with respect to the buffer, the 10-foot buffer, we do agree, we'd spent a lot of time on this before we took it to planning commission. So we had agreement with the staff on the way the buffer was set up. And we actually exceed the buffer requirement, if you take it as a whole, for the lot itself. But we do appreciate staff's relooking at that ordinance requirement and what's been approved in other mixed-use projects in the city. And I think you're going to find this building to be magnificent. It's going to be beautiful. I don't think you'll be disappointed when you look at it from the road. It's a different orientation than the State Line building that you were referencing earlier. So we're really happy with the design. And again, thank you for staff for working with us on it. And I don't know if I have anything else to say, but again, we're here for any questions, if you have any. If I can't answer them, I'll defer to our team. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Holland. Ms. Kane?
You said this, so it's the first one in Kansas City. Have they done, have they built this model elsewhere?
Well, that's a great question. I don't know if they've built this exact model. I would say probably not, because real estate's so unique and different, that you've got to put a building and fit it within the confines of where you're working and operating. So my guess is the footprint here is different than their other facilities across the, in the rest of the United States, but.
But to build 55-plus?
Oh, no, that's not uncommon.
Right. So this, so these two developers?
Yes, they're experienced in the.
Are experienced in the building, the 55-plus, whether or not it's an identical building or identical amenities?
Yep.
But this is their lane?
Longtime developers in this space, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. But not in this city?
Not in this city. This is their first one here. They came to Leewood. Because it's a great city. We heard that earlier tonight.
Mr. Sipple?
Thank you. Two questions, Mr. Holland. One is, on the north side of the new building, can the residents of the, what's the name of this?
Elizabeth.
Elizabeth. Can they get to the walking trail without having to cross a street, a busy street?
Yeah, they can.
On the north side, I think it.
I think they can enter. There's exits points to the west, too, that they could access those spaces from.
And then, Kenneth Road goes into a roundabout there on the southwest corner of this new building. Can you get to 133rd Street on the north end of that roundabout without going through the church parking lot?
That's a great question. The answer is that's no. You have to go around through the site itself to get up and make your way back to 133rd Street, be a little circuitous to do that, which reminds me to answer the one question I forgot to answer, and that's most of the traffic's going into this facility will be coming from 135th Street?
Right.
Off that Kenneth Road with the roundabout?
There's a traffic signal there.
Yeah, and they'll be, and then, I would expect that as the other entrance, the main entrance would be off State Line Road. It's just the ease and connection to get to this, to get to this part of the development. I wouldn't see a lot of 133rd traffic coming to this facility.
There's not going to be a lot of people cutting through this.
No, it would not, it would not be the easy way to do that. It would be circuitous.
Is there an entrance to 133rd Street at the north end of the, where, probably where the St. Luke's Hospital is, right in there?
We do have an entrance off the north.
Yeah.
To the north of 133rd Street. It's a right-in, right-out. I think there's actually two, one of the two entrances. One on the far east side, closer to the church, closer to the old Kenneth Road entrance. And those were all negotiated with the residents. They were very interested in where those were placed.
That was the reason for my question. Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sipple. Yes, Ms. Guyette?
Hi, Mr. Holland, thank you. So, the developers intend to own the project, correct?
Yes, yes.
We did read that in our packet, but I didn't see anything about, have they identified an operator or management? Is that going to be a local operator, or how's that planning on working? Who's going to manage the property?
Do you remember Jay? And I would ask Mr. Volkman if he's online, or if Rick Oda's online, if you know. And maybe if the developer, I'm not sure they're on or able to watch, but maybe they can answer the question. So I'm looking for an answer from.
I think your mute button's on, sir. I can see you talking, but I can't hear you. You can hear us, I can tell, but we're not hearing you.
So maybe you could raise a thumb up or a thumb down when Ms. Guyette asks that question again.
Text a colleague or something, maybe they can call you.
I don't even, huh? Yeah. Could you text, hey, Kirk, could you text either Jake or myself?
Yes.
Use your phone.
Oh, now we heard you. We just heard you.
There you go. Okay, yes, they're in the process of interviewing the final operators for the building. It is national operators that are looking at the property currently. They've kind of got a short list of about four different ones currently. So these are, you know, pretty much companies that have over 40 properties nationwide each.
And, Ms. Volkman, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and your address, so we've got it clear for our record, I'd be grateful.
Sure. Kirk Volkman with HED Architects in Chicago, Illinois, 320 North Sangamon Street, Chicago, Illinois, 60607.
Thank you.
And are they operators that specialize in the 55-plus, or are they just general multifamily operators? Do you know?
No, they're, these are senior living operators that manage everything from, across the continuum of care. So everything from active adult properties such as this, which is, for this property, is 55-plus. And then, you'll see it with independent living, assisted living, and memory care also. So these operators can carry the full continuum of care.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guyette. Other questions? Dr. Kestner?
So, two questions. So, does this project have memory care or assisted living?
It does not. No, it's an active adult community. It's folks like me.
And then, the second question, even though all of us 55-plus want to be active forever, I noticed that there was only 10 ADA parking stalls out of 265. And just curious, for the owners or developers and their other properties, is that enough for people who have knee replacements, hip replacements, have the, you know, the?
I'm working on number two.
The handicap sticker. I just wanted to be sure that.
I don't know the exact answer. I apologize.
That you guys have enough of those.
I know whatever we've done, we've met code with the handicap spaces. I suppose if we need more, we'll put more in. We have the flexibility to do that.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure you had some flexibility.
We want to, you know, serve our folks, our residents, and accommodate them, so.
All right. Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Holland, I have a couple. Just want to flesh this out a little bit more. So, as I understand it, your client intends to own the facility. Does that include both the dirt and the facility itself?
Yes, they're buying the land.
And has that transaction taken place, or is it?
It's contingent on receiving approvals here.
But it will close if and when we approve it this evening?
My assumption is yes. It's, there's not really, to my knowledge, there's not any else, anything else out there that would stop them from purchasing, but.
Okay, and?
Yes.
Thank you. And then, maybe a somewhat more difficult question, but it was something that's alluded to by Dr. Kestner that raised my mind, is, you know, certainly, our experience has been that in developing in Leewood, circumstances change, the economic environment changes, and we have to be, collectively, the developer, the owners, the governing body have to be agile to deal with that. I'm curious as to your thoughts to Mr. or Dr. Kestner's question about if circumstances arise that, for some reason, make this unviable as a 55-plus facility, what happens?
Boy, you're asking me to predict the future. First, I'd say, the folks we're talking about, who own and operate these facilities, are very successful, and I don't think they would have come to Leewood if they didn't think they could make this work. So, you know, I don't think there's a different plan out there to change it to something different. I've not heard of anything like that. But if in the, you know, something bad happens in the future, I mean, it's a residential building, mixed-use building. I think we're going to have to keep it that way and operate it and consistent with the LDO. And the way the zoning was approved, the PDP was approved. If there was a change that required us to come back here, certainly you'd have that opportunity to look at that. But we aren't anticipating that to happen right now.
Thank you. I appreciate the candor of your answer. Any other questions for the applicant here? Ms. Harrison?
I'm not sure if this is for Julie or the applicant. Piggybacking off of your question, that you piggybacked off of Dr. Kestner. So, since so many of these apartment buildings have been approved for Leewood, I'm now hearing, I've become a repository for the horror stories of folks having difficult neighbors in their apartments in South Johnson County. So who, who are folks supposed to call, or how do we make sure, as a city, that three adults aren't subletting a three-bedroom apartment from one person who has their name on the lease? Or how do we keep, another situation that I've been told about, four adults living in a two-bedroom apartment, how do we keep that from happening? Or is there fair housing laws that we can't do anything about that?
So our, my understanding is the leases are very strict about who can stay and be there. And I imagine if there is an issue that pops up that you're going to hear about it, they'll hear about it from other residents. And so, if there's violations of their agreements, I think that'll be dealt with by the ownership.
One would hope, but.
We have, just having talked to them a bunch, I don't.
Right.
What you're hearing is, would be, would be very surprising.
Well, I was surprised when I learned about these situations along the 135th Street corridor in Overland Park. So I thought, well, who knew? I didn't know that was a thing. Not everybody qualifies, has good credit, and can get a lease. So they apparently sublease from people who rent a two- or three-bedroom, and there aren't a lot of those, three-bedroom apartments. And so.
My guess is that's a younger crowd.
I guess, you know, sure. There are rural bearers everywhere. That's right. But I just, I guess, this is new to Leewood. We're just now, I don't know if you're aware of this, but we've only recently gotten into the apartment business in Leewood at this scale. So we have to, you know, sort of know how we're going to handle difficult situations where folks have signed a lease, or they have nowhere else to go. And so, you know, we just, it's not all, it's not all roses and tulips. So we just have to be ready, I suppose.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Other questions? If not, Mr. Holland, we thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
I believe that this comes to the point of discussion about approving the resolution to approve a final plant, final plan for East Village Elizabeth, the active adult community. Are any of the governing body members wish to be heard, or to express their thoughts? Yes, Ms. Larson?
Sure. I appreciated knowing the ballpark cost of the rental fees. I think that there is a big demand for this 55-plus apartment living for those who have more than one residence, or who just simply want to downsize. I appreciate the added amenities to the facility. I think that that makes it much more desirable. And I also appreciate the vertical mixed use. I think it's a better fit for what we're trying to do in that area. And I'm hoping that some of that mixed use on the first floor will be things that nearby single-family home members might enjoy visiting as well, like the restaurant and other things. So I support the application tonight, and I intend to vote for it.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Other comments? Mr. Sipple?
Just a quick comment. I, you know, we had the event out at Ironwoods Lodge this last weekend, where we're talking about the needs of our residents. And it always comes up that a lot of people want to, when they're empty nesters, they want to downsize, save money, go into something smaller. And this is not for everybody, but this is an alternative for people to go in, not for the rest of their lives, but for several years, hopefully. And I think that it makes sense. And I support what the developer is doing with Elizabeth.
Thank you, Mr. Sipple. Other comments, questions? If not, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve?
Thank you, Ms. Larson.
Second?
Thank you, Mr. Sipple. Other discussion of the motion. If not, all those in favor of adopting the resolution approving a final plan for East Village, the Elizabeth active adult community, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the resolution is unanimously adopted. Thank you, Mr. Holland. Thank you, Ms. Hurley.
Thank you. Just one quick note before I step away. We will not be at the police or fire open house to talk about the comp plan. I would hate to have anybody show up. Excited to talk to the planners and us not be there. But we will be at the city's Fall Festival on October 10.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any, I have no old business this evening. That brings us to the new business. And with that, I would welcome the Leewood Chamber of Commerce Executive Director and the Head of the Economic Development Council, Ms. Stephanie Meyer. Ms. Meyer, please proceed.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to see if the presentation is working. Okay. Do you have the PowerPoint where they live too? One sec. All right, we'll use the PDF. Well, good evening, everyone. It's Stephanie Meyer. As the mayor said, I'm excited to be here for our annual update, as I somehow conclude my third year in this role. So it's gone very quickly, and it's been another fun one. So it's always great to come in and talk about a little bit that is going on with us. So I will scroll here. My goal is to provide a few, kind of just outline, kind of fast facts about what's happening with the. fast facts about what's happening with the chamber and our structure and setup and all that good stuff, all of our events, and then dig into a little more detail about what's happening with the EDC and some of the things that I've been working on over the last year. And then I can talk a little bit specifically about that EDC budget that you have in your packet as well. So feel free, as always, to jump in with any questions or thoughts as well. Welcome that, too. So as you can see here, mission of the chamber has not changed. Our staff has changed a little bit here in the last year. So our longtime Director of Operations retired at the end of last year, so wish him well for that and appreciate his service. But it did give us a great opportunity to look at our staffing needs and how we had done things. And so we have actually started outsourcing our financial services. So we have kind of a fractional CFO, if you will, and it has gone really fantastically. It's a great chamber member, very involved, and it has really allowed us to utilize them and see some cost savings as a part of that with our staff overhead as well. So it's been a smooth transition, but we are a small and mighty team of three folks now, and hopefully you know Taylor and have had the opportunity to meet Lindsay as she came on in January as well, and Director of Membership. So this, I just wanted to provide, as always, a quick budget breakdown. This is the entirety of our budget. So the piece that you saw for EDC that we'll talk about later is just exactly that, just EDC. But our overall revenue expenses breakdown is listed here. So we brought in about $600,000 last year. That's very typical. A great deal of that comes in, and you'll see it broken down here. Membership dues is our largest revenue, which is a good thing. And then special events on our side as well. We made about $175,000 in special events last year. So that is a significant part of it, followed by, of course, the EDC contract, and then we have a number of programs that also bring in revenue. And happy to get into that detail. We have a full board that reviews all those financials, and I know, Mayor, you get to see those as well. On the expense side, we are a member organization, so our costs are largely driven by our staff costs and then office expenditures as well. So fairly typical, and this is what it looks like most years. Membership, by the numbers, so we continue to grow. We've had another really great year. Last year, we had 85 new members, and we're at 58 so far in 2025. So that is really fantastic. We are thrilled about that. We've seen just a lot of great growth. Our retention rate has also increased a lot. When I came on a few years ago, we had a little bit of cleanup to do in that data, so it dropped it a bit, but we have held very strong, and it's one of the strongest, certainly, retention rates, I think, in the county and certainly in the region. So speaks well. People come into Leewood and love it here and love to get involved and are really engaged. You'll see here, most of those folks are small businesses, so just over 60% of our members identify as a small business. And how we define that here at the chamber and EDC is under 25 employees. So that, you know, there's a lot of wiggle room between one person and 25, but that's kind of how we look at it there. And we do have quite a few who are probably under that five range as well. So we really try to tailor a lot of our programming, and I'll talk about that in a minute, to those small businesses and work a lot with them every day. Okay, events. We do a lot of them. So last year was another record year for events for the chamber. So we had 97 chamber-led events. So that includes everything from networking events, coffees, small business tailored programming, the full gamut. So a couple, really, a couple of events every week, which is really wonderful. We also had a record number of ribbon cuttings in 24 and 24, so that works out easily. And we are well on our way this year as well. So it's been fun to welcome all those new businesses to Leewood and certainly to the Leewood Chamber, too. So it's a fun way to kind of get the word out about everything that's happening here in the city. As you'll see, we have 78% of our members, and that is a specific individual, humans have attended at least one of our events through the year. So I think that really speaks highly to the community there, that people get involved and join our chamber and really want to be a part of it. They're not just joining it to say that they are members. So we love that. And I had to, of course, put a bullet point. It was presumptuous because I turned this in before the event, so knock on wood there. But another successful Taste of Leewood this year. So we had 768 tickets sold. So it was a record year for us and probably record heat for us as well, but that's okay. So went really well, had, as the mayor said, a number of vendors. We had 28 restaurants, just a really, just a wonderful evening. So I appreciate all of you, and I know a lot of city staff did come out as well. So it was a fun night, and hopefully for those of you who can't, couldn't make it, we'll see you at next year's event, and it will be sunny as well. So that is event-wise. Programming, a couple of things I want to highlight. You all have been involved in our Leadership Leewood programming, which has been fantastic. The City Day is always one of the favorites, and I'm sure that will continue. So we had another, our second Leadership Leewood class last year. We had 21 graduates through that class, and they've all stayed super involved, and we're looking forward. We've started taking applications for Class III. So if you know of anyone who would be a good fit for that, please do send them my way. But a really successful way to highlight what's happening in Leewood in several different ways through that. We also, as I've mentioned, have started a small business series, and we're doing that in partnership with Omni HR, who has been fantastic. So every other month, at least, a few months, we have more, we have programming that is specifically geared towards sort of continuing education. So whatever topics are going on with small business that we can be helpful. So sometimes it's financial, sometimes it's marketing, it kind of runs the gamut. We can come in and kind of do hands-on training there. We work a lot as well in that area with the Johnson County and Kansas Small Business Development Center out of the community college, and they bring a lot of speakers and partner one-on-one. And it's just a really great resource, and I would just put a plug in here that if you have a small business, even if they aren't a chamber member, the SBDC does work with folks often for free. So we like to connect people with that, and it's a great resource that we have utilized as well. And then lastly, our Young Professionals continues to just grow and grow. We have, I think, almost 100 YPs. I don't know, because I'm not in that age group anymore, but I think, I think it's about that. And they have a number. It's very robust programming. So they have a monthly Cars and Coffee. Again, that's a partnership with Moly Toyota, who have been wonderful partners. It is a specific topic, where they do a little bit of networking every month, and then they have various events and fundraisers throughout the year. So the Young Professionals has been a great driver for us. We've had a lot of, kind of, you know, not necessarily next year, but the folks who are going to be in leadership in the future, I want to get involved in our chamber specifically because we have more YP programming than a lot of the other folks do. So we really like to brag on that, and Taylor's doing a fantastic job with that as well. Then I'll transition to the economic development side. So I want to start here. So we do have members. So in order to be a member of the Economic Development Council, you have to be a chamber member, and these are businesses that have chosen to go above and beyond that. So they pay an additional membership fee to be a part of the EDC. And I think we talk a lot about the meetings that we have every other month, but I wanted to highlight tonight all of the other things that are going on with the EDC. And these businesses often call upon me or our team to help with that too, but just want you to know there's a great network of supportive people who are in the EDC as well. So some of the activities, aside from, of course, the regular meetings that I just wanted to highlight. So I work a lot with the Kansas City Area Development Council. They are a tremendous resource. Love them, talk to them probably every day, if not every other, very often. So just some stats from really in 2025 so far. So we've done 11 officer building tours. I know I've talked to you all before that the office space is particularly hot right now. There are a lot of companies looking, as we know, to move into Leewood. Many of those are on the other side of state line. So we get a lot of folks interested in coming in and seeing our spaces. So I hope coordinate that with the potential tenant as well as KCADC. We get very regular proposal solicitations from KCADC, from just a wide variety of people, and we work with them to complete those as well. Same story with Consultants Lunch. We often get pulled in as one of the kind of communities of note, which is a great thing for Leewood, as consultants are coming in from outside of Kansas City and wanting to learn more about where they could potentially invest. Here, we are often at that table for those lunches, so we get to make that pitch and talk about what's happening here, which has been great. We also had a couple of regional events, including a consultants event in Chicago that I got to go and participate in, and these were consultants from around the Midwest that were coming in specifically to talk to Kansas City folks and talk about what was going on here. So it was a great opportunity, again, to sell Leewood and put the plug in. And it is kind of events like that all the time, as you'll see, the calendar is very full. And then, of course, everyone loves the KCADC annual luncheon, which is coming up, so mark your calendar for October 30th. So you'll be hearing from me soon on our SVPs on that, but always a great, always a great event. Beyond KCADC, we also do the same thing with the Department of Commerce in Kansas. So I'm talking to my friends over there again all the time. We get a lot of proposals right now. It is pretty heavily manufacturing, I will say, but we get a lot of proposals from them that we go through and talk about whether it could be a good fit. Again, just regular, regular conversations all the time with the Department of Commerce. Couple of other events. So SIOR is an annual event that happens here. So it's a development conference in Kansas City. It is one day, so the Society of Industrial Office Realtors. Yes, it's always a mouthful. Sherri knows it. So it's a great opportunity, again, to just get in front of developers, people in the AEC space, talk about what's happening in Leewood, and have kind of more informal conversations with people and really just, again, remind people that we're here and we want to work with them. And I think the presence has been really helpful. I've always attended SIOR and ICSC, which I'll talk about in previous roles. And so it's, there are a lot of comments of like, oh, we're really glad to see that Leewood is here. We're excited to find a project to work together. So I think the presence is helpful. Same as I mentioned for ICSC. So this is the International Convention of Shopping Centers, and it is always in Las Vegas every year. So we've gone for a few years, and it's been very productive. There are probably 100 folks from Kansas City who make the trek out, so lots of Kansas City-centric events. And again, more opportunities that we can sell Leewood and talk about what we're doing here and encourage folks to get involved. And then again, just highlighting more of what happens outside of that. So I have a lot of conversations with potential developers. If someone sees a space that's open or someone thinks it could be, I get calls a lot. Julie has been fantastic of working with me of like, hey, I've talked to somebody who would love to meet with you or have a quick Zoom, talk about whether this could be a possibility. So that has really gone well, and I appreciate her willingness to do that. I also talk with all the peer cities, working with Johnson County a lot on a variety of different things. Hopefully you all receive our twice-a-year Leewood EDC magazine, so that is a big part of what we do as well. We also maintain the available buildings. The LOIS is the system that's on our website. So I do get calls often about what buildings are available or could be available. That is all kept within our website. And then, of course, the bimonthly Economic Development Council meeting. So it's kind of the tip of it, what everybody sees, but there's a lot more that goes into the day-to-day for EDC that's happening now. So a couple of things that are new this year. So working with the mayor and with Diane, we started very slowly, but started large business retention calls. So we've had our first one about a month ago, I would say, with the American Academy of Family Physicians, and it went really well, I think. It was a great opportunity to hear what was going on with them, engage them, and found a lot of new information about kind of what they're thinking for the future. So planning to continue those. The summer has been a little bit tricky for the larger businesses to have availability, but plugging away and making those happen. And then, of course, you all are aware of all the World Cup committee efforts, so that continues and will ramp up in earnest, and I'm really excited to continue to work with you all to prepare for that. I think we're at 271 days or something like that now. It's ticking away very quickly, but more to come on that. And then, of course, we're excited to participate however we can with the comprehensive plan and the LDO. I was at the community meeting last week. You all are coming to our EDC meeting and running it, doing it all on October 10th, so excited. That's going to be, I'm really targeting developers and members, again, of the AEC community who have worked with Leewood previously, are working with us now or maybe haven't, and have some reasons why. So I think it will be a very fruitful dialogue that's happening that morning. So I'm excited to hear the feedback that they have on that. Couple of quick highlights. I know I've talked to you about them before, but we had a couple of great office tenant wins that have been a couple of years in the making. One was a large trust company. They, I believe, will be fully open and operational this month, so we should be able to, we're planning a ribbon cutting with them now. So that should become more public very soon. But 47 current jobs, all six-figure jobs, and 6.2 million in CapEx to move over. And then an insurance broker a little further. They're hoping for the end of the year that we'll be able to release some of that, but 125 jobs there. So another fantastic win for Leewood and about 11 and a half million in capital investment there. I'm almost done, sorry. And a few updates, because I know y'all love the business and retail updates, too, and I do as well, just about some of our retail spaces. So for those of you who were at Taste of Leewood on Saturday, Lopez Mod Mexican was there, and it was fantastic. It is in the Old Session Taco space at Park Place. They are opening Wednesday, I believe is what I heard Saturday. So they're opening this week. Same ownership group as the previous, different menu, so go check them out. We're excited for them to be on board. Ranch Mart has Burg and Barrel. If you've been, there are a few of those around the metro area, fantastic burger. So they are opening just beside Billy's Grocer. So they are planning, they thought, January, but early 2026. So that will be great for Ranch Mart there. And then Town Center Plaza and Crossing, you all know they are under new ownership. I've had great conversations with them. They're excited to be involved in the city. He did tell me they do have a new tenant signed for that former restaurant space that was, all the things, La Bodega, Rock Hill Grill. It is not a restaurant, but that's all he could tell me. So excited to find out more about that. And J. Crew is back open on the Crossing side. Again, it keeps moving around, but happy to have J. Crew back in the mix as well. So I can take questions. I can also run you just very quickly through the EDC budget that you saw. It's in your packet, or I can pull it up if you'd like. But this, again, is just the EDC piece of it. So we receive a $125,000 contract from you all, and then you can see we bring in about $10,000 in revenue from our investors who commit to being a part of that as well. The breakdown, I should have included, so my apologies because it is a little bit wonky. It predates me, but my understanding is that my predecessor and the previous mayor and Diane's predecessor all decided when the contracts came together that the way it would be sort of allocated would be 50% of my salary is part, is what you see. 30% of the office and overhead costs for the chamber would be allocated towards EDC efforts. So that's how you kind of get to the numbers breakdown there that I should have added. A few quick just thoughts that jump out there. The advertising Leewood EDC line item for about 20,000 is the Leewood EDC magazine that you see twice a year. The event sponsorship is, again, that table. So you all purchase the membership to KCADC as a part of the agreement, and we purchase the table to that event. So you'll see that. Yeah, otherwise, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Questions for Ms. Meyer. Dr. Kestner?
I was just curious. I'm 100% with you that I think Leewood would be an amazing place. Leewood would be an amazing place for a unique restaurant concept, some kind of entertainment venue that wants to open a Midwestern location. Just based on your conversations at these national meetings, is there something Leewood can do differently to be in the final group of who's, you know, thinking about opening one of these businesses?
Sure. Great question. So what I would say writ large is just what I'm hearing anecdotally is that just having Leewood as part of the conversation. I think the process you all are going through now with the comprehensive plan and the LDO will be helpful in kind of determining what's the direction, what are you looking for, and kind of firming up whatever that might be, and then we can go out to the market. But I think a lot of people are excited, but kind of waiting to see what it is that might work for Leewood before they throw it out, if that makes sense.
Okay. Thanks.
Sure.
Ms. Gaiet.
Thanks, Ms. Meyer. And congratulations on those two big office tenant wins. That's a lot of CapEx coming into the city, so that's a really big win for us. Just curious, J. Crew was gone for two years?
Correct.
So they closed their location, and then two years later, they opened up again across the street?
That's correct.
Did, when they closed, did they give any indication why? Or when they reopened, did they say why they wanted to come back?
Sure. So anecdotally, I will say that I think that they struggled with that location being in the main part of it. I don't think they got as much traffic as what they were hoping for. And from what I've heard, the Crossing is much, is a much busier spot, and it's a spot with tenants that are maybe closer in likeness to them. So I think there's a lot of science behind people who want to be close to an apple store and a Lululemon store. So they, I think, were seeking that opportunity. I think it was between us and a development in Overland Park that is a little further south. So, yes. And there is an outlet on the other side, so J. Crew is well represented, if you want to shop.
Yeah. Interesting.
Thank you, Ms. Gaiet. Other questions for Ms. Meyer? Well, if not, we appreciate your waiting to be the heel of the docket tonight. Again, congratulations on those two big wins, and congratulations on the great event that you had last weekend. We're looking forward to the EDC hosting the Rooted and Reaching Project and to hear what your members have to say about it, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
If not, we appreciate your being here. Is there any other business to come before the governing body this evening? If not, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Ms. Villa. Thank you, Dr. Kestner. Thank you, Dr. Kestner. Any discussion? All those in favor of adjourning, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and we are.